All right, that's called the city council meeting for Monday, May 22nd, 7:00 PM. We'll call.
Ms. Adams.
Davis, Mary Rice.
Ms. Lawrence.
Boyer.
Chesky Mariva.
Jared Logan.
Michael Summerbrook.
No implication tonight. I would like to use this time to take a brief moment of silence. Last week, we lost a member of the Montrose community who was being had passing. So we just take a quick moment to start by the next one. For the religions, Congress State. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The full agenda.
I will make motion in for the agenda.
Ms. Kennedy.
Aye.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Kennedy, aye.
Aye.
Twenty budgets passes. Uh, we will consent to the agenda. The legislature, the council.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kennedy, aye. I will vote yes, Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Select county sheriffs. City council report.
Uh, I went to celebrate Montrose meeting for communicating, I did recommend the O P chamber. Um, that's pretty much it.
Fire Department D E A, city council workshops, council meeting, and public meetings with residents.
Council personnel meeting, workshop.
Um, property workshop and background meeting.
The fire department, good timing.
Before you start, did you pass your test, Eric?
I did.
Congratulations.
All right, first item on the agenda for me is the activity report for April. Um, acknowledgements are for Eddie Andrea for completing his fire instructor one course and completing the pass and state certification test. And then, uh, Justin Phillips for his eleven years, seven months, and one day of service to the fire department. So I'll have his resignation, so I have our exit. He decided that he was going to sign just like not less than the position. Other than that, any questions on that? Uh, next item is authorized purchase of new firefighter here. Um, coat and pants for two firefighters, cost of year around $6,000. Um, and we have to be, have to give you grant money for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the $6,000 for the firefighter here. I'll second. Ms. Kennedy. Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Well, yes.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, next one is just a thank you letter that I wanted to share with you guys. It's in your packet. Um, it reads, Dear Montrose Fire Department, on the morning, Tuesday, February 7th, we called 911. It appeared to us that John was having stroke. Montrose Fire Department is present within minutes to provide aid soon after the ambulance arrives. Thanks to your quick response, John is now home in recovery. We are so grateful that we have a fire department in every town and for the folks who volunteer their time to help us in our time of need. We don't recall the names of all who were there to assist, but behold you fondly and our thoughts of gratitude. As the ambulance took John to the hospital on his icy cold day, Janine, prepared to lead by a car to the hospital, sees a female firefighter straking the ice off of her car windows. You cannot know this simple extra step made very difficult day somehow easier to endure. As a token of our gratitude, um, they made a donation to us, which was included with the thank you. So I'd like to share these with you guys just to show the good work that we do. A lot of it goes without notice, but when we do those, it's very cool, so. Uh, next is resolution 2023-09. Um, it's for accepting and donation to the Montrose Firefighters Relief Association. Uh, the Montrose Firefighters Relief Association is a prize to the members of the Montrose Fire Department. Through our income that we get through there, which is our gun raffle, dinner, um, and various other things that we do throughout the year. We do things with that money to make firefighters' lives a little bit easier sometimes. Um, that's what we use for buying dinners on our Tuesdays, when we have meetings and such. Um, another thing that goes with that money is it's there designed to help the Montrose Fire Department with equipment purchases and things like that. So the relief association graciously donated $42,020.20 and $0.62 to purchase a new side-by-side firefighting vehicle. It's a purpose built side-by-side, um, and it came from Texco Motorsports out of Bosh Cosh, Wisconsin. We already have the unit, so we're just looking to get the acceptance of the donation real property for the Montrose Fire Department.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, resolution 2023-09.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Ms. Andrew.
Aye.
Well, yes, Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Twenty passes.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item is for the emergency management side of things. So city staff and emergency management have recently been meeting and discussing some security upgrades and shortcomings that the city has. Um, included in your packet is a memo, um, that was drafted by me, checked by, um, Jessica. And, uh, we're looking to expend $110,000 out of ARPA funds. And what this, uh, item does here is it gets us a key management system. Um, so for example, the public works people won't have to carry seven, eight different keys. Um, we can cut that down to maybe two or three. Um, and get all the lock cylinders within the city replaced, so that's a faster type of system. It also would get us a camera system, um, upgrading the camera system at city hall, adding it to this building, the fire department, and it also cover the, um, compost site as well. Not super high def cameras or anything like that, where we'd be able to see cars coming in to help. You wouldn't necessarily be able to zoom in and see what item they're throwing himself. Um, we can start as far as getting cameras over the compost site. Um, it also includes a key fob system, so for the more accessible doors, the ones that we're using more often, we would give key fobs system, so rather than giving people a hard key to, um, rent at the community center, we would give them a key fob and integrate the kind of key fob in. We just delete that out of the system and we're out on the money. Whereas if you have a hard key, if you lose that hard key, now security is going to compromise. Um, and then the last thing is door replacement. There's a few doors that need to be replaced when we were doing our walkthrough and such. Some of the doors are old or they need new doors to accommodate the, um, key fob system. But total, um, estimated cost through Brussels security was $99,961. I'm asking for not to exceed cost of $110,000 because we anticipate some minor changes happening through out and I'd rather try and get those taken there immediately rather than having them back.
I'll make a motion to authorize the security upgrades to the city buildings and infrastructure for Brussels security. Cast not to exceed $110,000 out of the ARPA funds.
I think these upgrades are definitely the best, however you know. With that said, I will vote to yes, Ms. Allen.
Uh, aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Andrew.
Aye.
Twenty passes, poll two.
Uh, next item is to authorize, uh, emergency management to get vents installed on the air conditioner unit and generator over there. Um, it's going to be a chain link fence, black binding chain link fence. Um, and it's gonna, so I got a bunch of different quotes ranging from $2,710 all the way up to close to $10,000. Um, it's staff's recommendation to work projects of shed and fence company out of St. Montevadis. Uh, they were going to have to pull for $2,710. And then again, requesting an extra $1,000 on this one, just so that as we're working it, um, and minor changes need to be made and only come back for around $500 or something like that. So again, this will be paid out of the ARPA funds that the city received. Um, and that's pretty much that.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the spending of $3,700 for the fence around.
I'll second. Any discussion? Ms. Andrew.
Aye.
Well, yes, Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you.
We met on Tuesday, May 16th. A few different, uh, discussion topics on there, but some things I wanted to bring to the attention is, uh, something that's really interesting is trying to figure out some childcare in Montrose area. So, um, we're working with, uh, reaching out to first children's finance, uh, to do a study, uh, see what that looks like as far as what the needs are in town. Um, so it's a start, uh, which I think it's a need, not only here, but all where it's becoming. Um, and then we just talked about some ideas to attract, uh, some business. And, uh, Miss Foss in Wright County had some greats, uh, but three different developers that were interested in not only looking at the preserve, but possibly some other areas in town as well. Um, so good momentum, yeah, I thought it would be good to add this.
Um, if you reach out to, uh, Kim Gelsom at Community Education, they were just tapping along. They think her issue with, and so they have some stuff because they do daycare.
Hmm, yep.
So they might have some numbers more to add to.
Perfect.
Any questions? All right, I'm in zone.
Council staff at our equal 14 meeting, revisited our, uh, checking ordinance. After limited input, motion was made that we abstain from doing anything in this time with the ordinance. So votes four zero to leave that at the escrow. And our next meeting will be considering, uh, improvements for, uh, parking food trucks in the city. Any questions? Thank you.
The next, uh, equipment and consulting contractor services.
Hi, Timmy Air Council. Uh, you guys have seen this a couple of times now. We talked about it in a workshop. Um, I did send you guys, um, information about what we've spent on planning services the last few years. You can kind of get an idea about that. Um, mostly tonight, we'd have to just decide if we want to continue to use Steve as our planner. That would be improving the contract and then to decide, um, if you want to stick with hourly rates or you want him to develop a retainer, which sounds like it would be around $1,200. We haven't, um, finalized that number yet, so if you do want to do a retainer, that would be something we can talk about further.
I think we should, uh, stick with Steve down for how long? We've done some good work, I think, which is our leader, our leader.
Reason the average is just that we utilize Steve's services during the months.
For the past, let's see, since 2021, the average monthly amount was $819. Um, in 2022, the average monthly amount was $1,464. And in 2023, so far, the average has been $910. Um, keep in mind that some of the planning services get allocated to developers and different other things where they get charged out of their escrow for that. So this is just like our city planning services that we're taking forward, so. It might make sense to tick with the non-really.
I think it'll be starting with the hourly and, you know, if it starts getting away, I don't even know.
So this contract would go through December 31st of 2024, and then at that time, we can renegotiate the rate.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I think the hourly related probably are the best bet here.
I'll make a motion, aye. I'll make a motion to continue Steve Britman at the hour rate of, uh, $165,000.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Andrew.
Right.
Oh, well, yes, Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Twenty two passes, four zero. Testing engineer.
All right, good evening, Aunt Mary Council. Uh, new baguettes this evening. I have some historical information essentially about assessments on previous projects. The County Road 12 improvement project was the last project. Um, we're assessments for levels that pulls in that information, identify the approximate percentage. It shows around 13% of the project cost. And the charts that follow in that memo basically indicate what the rates, um, preliminary rates were that were provided to residents. And then applying the 13%, um, the second chart, uh, is the reduced amount based on 13%. The second page really breaks down, um, the cost, but the bottom right-hand numbers are the ones that council may be most interested in. Uh, preliminary goals or wants are provided in the past, total approximately 2.2 million in assessments with the allocation of that 13% as well as assessed on the County Road 12 project. That total was about 1.2 million in assessments for the overall project, so, um, that's for council information. Certainly, uh, the difference between 2.2 and 1.2 is the approximate million bucks. Um, and that's being provided just per council knowledge is there is a, there are additional projects that have been identified in the E A P. So, um, moving forward, that would be the, if assessments were determined to be, uh, that'd be for the project, that would be the, the impact to the overall, um, project financing budget. With that, I'll answer any questions that council would have.
Jared, do you want to apply us? The project was, um, downtown Second Street, um, south, or, or, over by College Avenue. That development that we did a few days ago, do you remember what that cost of when we did this?
Did it assess?
Yeah, we, we did not assess because it was not a complete reconstruction. It was just like a normal building.
No questions are here, but I think we need to figure this out, right? It's been a while now. People are waiting, residents are waiting. Yeah, realtors that are waiting, so, um, I think we need to, we need to make a determination tonight with the four of us. Figure this out. I, I.
Should have been made a few days ago, personally.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm agreeable with that. It's, we can't, we can't keep pushing this to the next month, to the next month, to the next month. So, you know, we have a good numbers here. If you like them, you like them. If you don't, you don't, but we need to put it to the vote so that we can have residents either clear their mind or understanding what's coming forward.
I agree with you, you know, you could have done, I hate the fact that not all five of us are here. Uh, the city like this, understand residents are waiting. But to not hear all five voices, it might be a disservice, but I understand that you need to move forward.
So Jared, in this right now, um, pardon these costs or whatever, what's all included? I mean, it's like, no, fence project that was given over there, any more sidewalk figures that are going on?
Yeah, so if you take a look at the, um, second sheet, basically broken out by streets, sewer water, sidewalk, um, storms who are, the sidewalks not assessed for, for residents, but, um, all project costs are included. So this, these aren't the total project costs, these are just the examples of what is set, um, so everything, no fact of the law, that's all part of the overall total project cost, so that would be included as an assessment percentage.
How are we feeling, council?
For me, it's a tough decision because, um, if it's a total overall cost percentage, I do think like some of the extras that were given, say that fence or apron on somebody's property or whatever, that's kind of still should be assessed, but the actual street project should, I just think it should be. How do we, how would we break something down?
So you, you think the fence and the apron should be assessed, not the street?
Right, because we gave some extra, you know, things to different portions of the city, you know, different residents or whatever. And, you know, the other two of the sidewalk that's outside too, because you guys have to redo that. Um, right, so who, is that, who covers that cost? I mean, the city's not going to cover that, right?
No, no, they're not.
You know, I can say I think anytime with a sidewalk or any related, I can assess, but some bigger structure, reconstruction. Makes me think, you know, we have a lot of projects upcoming over the next few years as well, so in one way or another, taxes will run. It's either assessment or everybody's taxes will run, so.
We do have a couple of people here that are impacted by this, and I don't think we're going to talk at all. I mean, I, I know their opinions, but, I mean, this could be a chance for you to, I don't know.
No, last time I got that bike, I was almost in tears.
We don't want that.
I don't know.
What are we putting this in?
I have to go back with all here.
Without the first number here, what do you think about some assessment?
I mean, I'm not a huge fan of assessments. I understand it's done sometimes, but, yes, from the beginning, I wasn't a fan of assessments.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'll, I'll say it was not a bad piece of, in general, um, would this have been a big issue?
There's a question. If it's not assessed to, to, actually we're held by this, it would be just spread across the city. Is that true?
Yep. Any micro. I mean, I, I agree because, just because we're not like on Second Street here, we still grab it. We all still use it, so, um, it should be spread across affecting the whole city, not individual homeowners.
My concern with that is there is a, another project that affects certain residents. How we do that in the fair, third, and we pay the, is it back there, they're flooded?
But that's.
That's a point.
That's, we, we discussed with those residents.
I don't know what you're saying, but it's just going to be something that will come up further down the road. This is what we just did, that's quite a, it's a, um, I don't know. We gotta be real careful how we approach this because it will come back and bites.
I will say, if we don't assess, it's not, it's not going to be that we can't do it in the future, but it's definitely going to, it's going to be tougher than it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I always have an opinion. I just feel like it's a little bit of a city we'll take advantage of, and so it should be spread across. If it was my neighborhood, I wouldn't want to be assessed by myself. Now, if my sewage flows up in front of my house and I have to pay for that, that's different. If I want to connect to sewage, I think that's different. But I think when it comes to a kid, that infects, that infects the entire city. We're all going to take advantage, I mean, if it's just making our city better, that's all there is to it. Cross the board, we have a better city than we did before this election was started. So there's my two cents. Do you need to hear the end?
Just playing devil's advocate.
With that, with that said, I, I'll just make a motion to down assess for a project.
How's that?
Not assessed.
Second. Any further discussion? Ms. Andrew.
Aye.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Aye. You're trying to go.
That's right.
All right, city engineer updates.
Okay, um, really the updates that I had previous evening was just the odd cable and stuff, so it's great news. Um, most of the city's been done, we've got, early contractor, we have a few functional sites that will take care of a couple of them pretty much. Sort of, but for the most part, we're, we're drawing to a close with this, I think, about these things. It's good to use and, um, we crushed cable this week, so with that, some handover.
Well, it looks like it's more or less, sorry.
Thanks for that, I'll, during this, I beg your, yes, you're here today.
Very much appreciate it.
See you at the finish line.
Need anything else for Jared? Uh, park and rec, you're responsible. Welcome. Welcome.
Your name, council? So, a bid is for you for a basic meeting. We were changing the time of our meeting to the second weekend, or second Tuesday every month at 6:00 p.m. We're asking also council for a 120-day grace period for the permission to operate that sport in the middle of the points on the report number.
Overall, our business survey that was our bench installation, the usual hub, and the position made by the board.
Yeah, can we do a motion for an 120-day grace period for permission of a motion? On the motion to do 120-day grace period to.
I will say, further discussion?
Uh, just, do you have any information?
Uh, not that I know of, but I will check.
I did tell somebody on Friday, we got the day, and now she's, she.
Yeah, I'll check on this, yeah. Not that I know of, but.
We have a deadline for, occasionally on that. So we are looking for parking wreck?
Everybody's.
Everybody has to sound.
Yep, well, Ms. Andrea.
Hi.
Oh, yes, Ms. Perez?
Hi.
Ms. Otto?
Hi.
Second would be for the, uh, funds for her restoration of park, park, of acres for CD maintenance, uh, until 2026, essentially for $25,000. While we're getting project setup, utilization, site preparation, CD, CD and CD and road control.
Road control, that's it.
How about anything for that, so we can, we can.
Who said how much?
Give a little bit of an update on that at all, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, please.
Would you be counsel? So with the updated proposal, there was a couple changes from what we had a month ago. After visiting the site, we determined that the entire lot acres will be one full of spray. Uh, this will be a combination of size, but pretty deal, so. Uh, and the areas that have heavy turf grass growing will require follow-up side application, which is about three acres, so that, that will fall under the site preparation. After that, we're going to, we'll see the powder mix, which is on the fourth page of our document. And then, as well as some road control on the visual burn, the middle of the project. We can't see that, grab that.
So you're thinking it may be cut off, like you?
Yeah, uh, the initial spray, we should probably get it on, because it's too possible, so, yeah. Early June, I think. And let that process, uh, end July, I think. There is a timeframe from the end of August to the end of September, we'll pull off on plenty of days, just because if you see it, you put it in the ground, it doesn't have very good chances of happening. If it falls beyond that date, we do a small control at the scene.
I'll make a motion for, um, approval for restoration, uh, the lot is $25,000, and the CD is $25,000.
Where is this bike at?
There is, for just this budget year, there's $10,000 in the park development fund, but we've put away a lot of money for park development fund over the years, for the original parks.
So do you have plenty of money for it?
Some funding for it, 15, 25,000.
Just, I think the money's coming from. Yes, sir.
Can I make a comment on this?
Of course.
I believe back when that was developed, the taxpayer paid about 50 grand to get that CD, and we rented it out to a farmer who was planting sunflowers, who was gonna turn it back to where it was. Did we get any of that money recovered?
Well, we didn't pay anything for the sunflowers, um, as far as.
Because he created a burn, and now that's gotta be taken out.
Now, the burn is gonna be staying there.
The burn's gonna stay there, huh?
Yep, that's what they just talked about, yep.
Okay, but I know we paid a lot of money to seed that down, and now we're gonna pay some more because the guy didn't hold up his end of the contract?
Unfortunately, that seems to be a danger. That's it, 120. At the time, it was, was gonna be a good deal, obviously, the drought killed all that.
I think once this is done, and all my done, and all those people, things out there, I have to set up from the same waste plant, but it's, you know, some power grid here, for a certain time. Be able to boost it up a bit, and then a nice more, so.
And it also takes a lot of time away from all the works, having to maintain that, because that's a good couple days, long, up there.
So we got more than a second. Oh, sorry, yeah. Further discussion? Ms. Perez?
Hi.
Ms. Otto?
Hi.
Ms. Andrea?
Hi.
And we'll guess.
I believe this is the final vote, who is, um, elected Toby Nelson as chair and someone else as vice chair.
Stay motion approved, whatever, commission appointments?
We'll make a motion to approve new commission appointments, and Toby Nelson as chair and vice chair of Josh or Joshua, which is, Joshua's sponsor.
I will say.
Further discussion? Ms. Otto?
Hi.
Ms. Perez?
Hi.
Double yes, yeah.
Hi.
Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. Other works?
Here, acting mayor council, there is a, first item is bits for concrete from Jordan Concrete Construction. This would be for, there's a spot over on Highway 12, near Embra's truck repair that we had to destroy the sidewalk to do like a waterline repair over the winter. That needs to get fixed, maybe for a slab at Best Park for the flats to be anchored into. Rolling Meadows had for a bench at the regional park for the new donated from CCC. It was a really nice picnic table, but they talked to it. And then, it's a work there in on a replacement bench for Light Auto at Harborfield, but I think that's being donated, so we are be asking for approval for a $5,550, um, to get some concrete.
I make a motion to approve the $5,550 for the concrete?
How's that?
Further discussion? Or would this be coming from?
Or we have budgeted in park maintenance or treasures, probably millions.
Ms. Otto?
Hi.
Ms. Perez?
Hi.
Double yes, Ms. Andrea.
Hi.
Motion passes 4-0.
Hi, acting mayor council, next item on the agenda is a quote for water tower cleaning. This would be the water tower at the end of Markville, not whose, uh, north, south, excuse me. It is, if, if, if I repair or in need of cleaning because of the rail dust and everything that gets pushed on it from there, and it's really dirty, so there are many to clean of that, and staff will recommend approval of the $9,500 for water tower cleaning.
Who was the last time this was coming?
I don't recall any plan that lasted 12 years, so.
It's been a long time, definitely not since I've been here, it's been almost seven years, but, so. Been a long time.
I'll make a motion to approve the $500 for water tower cleaning.
How's that?
Further discussion? Ms. Andrea?
Hi.
Double yes, Ms. Perez?
Hi.
Ms. Otto?
Hi.
Motion passes 4-0. We can also make a start on that. Yes.
Yeah, I can, I'll be.
Tomorrow?
Acting mayor council, last item for all the works this evening is kind of, it's a certificate of accommodation that ways water treatment, we see movement, so pollution control agency for exceptional compliance with their waste water permit during 2022, which I thought you guys made some ready questions there.
It was a great work. Thanks for, I had.
And their work was for the what?
Waste water treatment.
Waste water treatment?
It's for the wastewater treatment plant for exceptional compliance with their permit.
Very good.
A whole business, new business.
Mayor council, including your package, this evening was an amendment for the Northridge Sixth Edition Developer Agreement. This original developer agreement was done last May, and the developer has requested amendment because of our change to our treaty ordinance, and that is the change that is reflected in the amendment here. This has been reviewed by staff, by engineers, planning, and attorneys, and they're recommending the full of this. If you have any questions, Jay is here. There shouldn't be any questions, everything is pretty straightforward.
They're planning on this, they're working on this as a whole. Any questions?
Is this, uh?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the Northridge Sixth Edition Development Agreement amendment.
I will say, further discussion? Ms. Perez?
Hi.
Ms. Andrea?
Hi.
Ms. Otto?
Hi.
Double yes, passes 4-0.
Acting mayor council, the next item on the agenda is Resolution 2023-10. It's a resolution authorizing the adoption of Wright County All-Hazard Medication Plan. Staff has worked with Wright County on this mitigation plan for the last couple of years, I would like to say, and they are asking for adoption from all cities that participated.
Pretty strict order, any discussion on it?
I'll make a motion to, to, um, accept Resolution 2023-10.
I will say.
Ms. Otto?
Hi.
Ms. Perez?
Hi.
Double yes, Ms. Andrea.
Hi.
Passes 4-0.
Acting mayor council, the next item on the agenda is signs for record names, white family. This is a request coming from residents in the area, there's a lot of speeding out there, they want a sign that says slow down, or something that they can put in there. There are other options, but it's just a request, written motion.
We've talked before about, um, metal signs. Do we, do the assembly have some?
We, we talked about the street signs that were, they think.
Yeah, there's a lot of street signs out there, we can replace, but this would just be for to yeah, wait the children to play, or just try to slow traffic down, and we've talked to Wright County before, those signs really don't make a lot of difference.
And there are some on Breckridge currently, I've driven on White Hill, which is, I would imagine, probably some, I can think of at least two on Breckridge.
Yeah.
Good white, so, yeah, that's the strength that they were talking about, where, again, what's a sign gonna do, what's peace of mind for, for these residents, and I also think we still should reach out and count about, maybe.
Extra patrol, okay.
Extra patrol, using that, so we, something, whatever.
Yeah, monitor.
Yeah.
Do you need to, like, monitor my car field now, too? Since we have to set up, um, that's a speed.
That, that's not time longer, because for a lot of people.
There's, uh, there's a freeway stop by car field, which has been on the line before, and they even put a cardboard sign that says we have now, please stop, that's outside. Because, and now, call starts this week, so.
How much is, how much is Northridge signs?
Signs can be used by the, I can have Dan look into it more, it's something we're interested in, and that had brought to the, just leaving us the reasons, so.
Yeah, I think we could, uh, further look, like I said, I think, there's at least two on Breckridge. Like to know if there's anything on White Hill, if there is, and then, we should also look at carpet. What's going on there? Table is still.
Kevin, other than the sheriff sitting out there, what other ways to mitigate this?
So if you get this, if you coordinate with the sheriff's office and get one of their speed trailers out, that'll give you the data, of how many cars are going, what their speed ranges are within and stuff, so you can actually determine that there is an actual problem. I would think that would probably be your first step, and then addressing those steps become very difficult. I'm dealing with them in other jurisdictions as well, neighborhoods very similar to that. You know, residents want speed bumps, residents want roundabouts, residents want all this kind of stuff, and that's all very expensive stuff to do. Other than just the added enforcement and keeping the deputies on top of it, that's probably the best thing.
I would be opposed to the radar trailer. I think a lot of times, if you're watching a car, you think it's going a lot faster than you think it is.
Especially in neighborhoods.
Especially in neighborhoods. Maybe that's what we need to look into also.
I'd like to start there.
Hey, acting mayor council, last item regarding business for this evening is the proposal for Montreal Planning or Capital Improvement Plan, however you want to say that. We have discussed this, we discussed this, we went through a very outdated capital improvement plan. I have realized how badly we do need a capital improvement plan. So this is a quote for that, leave it as 15,000. $15,950 total, so it'd be 7,975 paid upon contract execution, and then the state paid upon project completion. We have to work with staff to do protection and work on rate studies and things to help, um, us keep financially secure for the future. And for some of those big projects that we need to do that, um, we know are necessary.
This is another thing, that's what has been redone. So I think in order to have a clear definition of what the future of the model is like, this is kind of the first step in stuff.
Yeah, we got a, took out some things, but one of the things that you have all group brought in, that you have a good time here to plan for, so. And we, you know, it's actually, let's do it, almost not. Actually have a, a plan for the city.
So this is you bringing it, taking it up there.
Do it. Hold your head.
You will hold your head. Further discussion on that?
I'll make a motion for approval of $2,090 for the add to the proposal for water cleaning, capital improvement plan.
I will say.
Further discussion? Ms. Otto.
Hi.
Ms. Perez.
Hi.
And we'll guess. That's just 4-0. Open forum. Seeing any open forum requests? All right, upcoming meetings, uh, finding dwelling meeting with the public hearing to consider orders changed for food truck parking. It will be this Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. right here at the Montreal City Hall Center. City Council workshop canceled for day 29th. Park and rec meeting, this one will be Thursday, June 8th.
Tuesday, June 13th.
Sorry. Scratch that park and rec meeting, Tuesday, June 13th at 6:00 p.m. at the city hall conference room.
It'll be the 6th.
It's the 6th.
June 6th.
That'll be Sunday, Tuesday.
Our next one will be June 6th.
Okay, let me try this again.
No, we're fine.
Park and rec meeting, Tuesday, June 6th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Montreal City Hall Conference Room. Any other questions on June 6th? Fair enough. Uh, next word of the city council meeting will be Monday, June 12th, correct? At 7:00 p.m. right here at the new Montreal City Hall Center. Uh, the planning building, that will be Wednesday, June 14th, at 7:00 p.m. right here. Next PDA meeting will be Tuesday, June 20th, at the, at the Montreal City Hall Conference Room. Exhale, that's.
Um, I just wanted to acknowledge Wayne Ile for everything that he did for us for the city. You know, there's Doug, you know, we gave him some of your park and rec. He helped a lot at community deals, he can buy a place. Just an honor on, for his.
He definitely, he's definitely gonna be a human before in the city. Your character.
I guess I'd like to, uh, acknowledge the relief association for their nomination and President Phillips for his service.
I was ready to be there for the nomination, yeah.
All right, go ahead, your motion to adjourn. Second. Ms. Otto.
Hi.
Ms. Perez.
Hi.
And we'll guess, Ms. Andrea. I hope that's all there was over to adjourn.